We call to order the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for March 27, 2023. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Jim Thompson to do our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning. Good to see each and every one of you here this morning. We have a good turnout of commissioners as well as individuals who've come here with items to discuss and present before this commission. This time, we'll have our roll call and determination of quorum. Madam Secretary?
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
President.
Hettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We'll move in now. We don't have any minutes to approve this morning, so we'll move in items that need to be withdrawn or deferred.
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We do have one item that was pulled on the agenda. Now, the agenda on your iPads and what you see on the screen before you is correct. The printed version got printed before we had taken that off, but that item, one under site plan approval, the Middle Point landfill RNG facility, that has been removed from the agenda. That will not be considered today.
All right, one item withdrawn, which is item B1. That one will be withdrawn. Move now into items six, new business, beginning with item A, submitted for final plat approval. Item one, Creekside Estates, section two, phase one, reapproval, 212084, 29 lots on 22.98 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Shallow Water Way. Black Diamond Construction LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good morning, everybody. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in July of 2020. This final plat was approved by the commission back in October of 2021. Since final plat approvals expire if they haven't been recorded within 12 months, this plat has expired, so they are simply asking for reapproval. Nothing has changed on this, so we would recommend approval of that.
Commissioners, discussion, comments?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner P., further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item one has been approved. Moving now to commission to number two, Buchanan Estates, section eight, phase three, reapproval, 222007, 55 residential lots on 27.23 acres, Zoned RM, located along Duesenberg Drive. Jones Construction Company is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is similar to the situation from the last plat that we just considered, Buchanan Estates, as a subdivision, has been under development for quite some time. This particular section, which is section eight, the preliminary was approved back in April of 2018. This final plat for phase three was originally approved by the planning commission back in February of last year. Again, it's been over 12 months. Nothing has changed on this, but the plat has expired, so they are asking for reapproval. Again, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, anything changed between 2018 and now as it relates to our policies and rules and regulations?
Nothing that would affect this, and there is vesting laws in place that subdivisions like this, they operate under the conditions in which they were approved. But again, nothing, even considering that, nothing has changed on this that would really affect this.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion approved. Commissioner Phillips.
Second.
Have a second.
I got a question on that.
Mr. Thompson?
You got a motion and a second, right?
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, based on the dates and time on this, and I know I had conversation last week, and I'm seeing some of these come back and got a little time and age, I'd like to know just from a taxpayer-citizens base if we've got these old plats not approved and we've got new ones coming in to be approved, and we've got lack of funding. I think it'd be wise to talk about what would take place if we don't get funding on what these lots are adding to the tax base in this county. Just from me being the newest guy on this commission, I don't think we can just keep going through here and saying we're going to approve, approve, approve without fully understanding what to expect. Let's say we don't get the funding that we need. What happens with that?
Director, you want to answer that?
I can try. Well, again, a lot of these developments, like I said, especially this particular development, has been on the books for quite some time. Buchanan Estates, just in general, it's been under development for several years. Now, of course, like I said, we have to operate under the regulations of which these were approved. If you start switching in the middle of the regulations, in the middle of an approval process, that can get you into some sticky situations if you're not careful. As Mike is showing on the computer right now on the screen, the roads are in place, the infrastructure has been built, is there. I think a lot of these that we're going to be considering today are already in the system. I think what we need to do to help answer your question is consider, okay, moving forward, okay, what's done is done, but moving forward, what can we do to prohibit or to help eliminate some of the issues that we're starting to experience when it comes to those kind of things? I'm not quite sure I'm answering your question or not. I understand where you're going with it, but obviously, that's a pretty, that's a topic that could take several hours to figure out, if not days.
I agree. I think, I agree with you. I think these are approved, and stamping approval on them again just to keep them in the flow seems to fit at this time, but I think from a taxpayer's base out there, the citizens have got to be asking the same thing I'm asking, is without proper funding for the schools and everything that's not in place, there's got to be a point in time that as a commission, not us, but our county commission, looks like me, is going to have to step up and say, hey, if this doesn't work, we just can't just keep proving lots.
And to answer that, Mr. Thompson, I would say that those discussions are actively ongoing right now.
Commissioner Ross is sitting in that same position that you're thinking about right there, and also as a county commissioner as well, and I totally understand what you're talking about there. Our situation, though, as a regional planning commission, though, we have to look at the fact of what has already been done, what these individuals have already been told, and where they are there, too. Sitting over here in our far corner is legal counsel, and we have legal counsel here for a specific reason, is to keep us out of that big tall building sitting over here that we built several years ago, and these are things that we like to stay away from, too. But exactly as you're saying right there, to continue to do as we're doing, I think some of the things we're talking about is exactly that, that we wish to stay away from the fact that we have to look at our infrastructure, we have to look at those things, too. But what has already been done and what we're looking at this morning has already passed all the, I have to say, past muster as far as what our regulations and rules and responsibilities have been to get these where these are right now. But anything going forward, anything going new, that goes back to our county commission and also goes back to us in the future.
Mr. Chairman, is that also covered in the comprehensive plan that we're currently updating?
Exactly. The comprehensive plan will be doing some of that.
Right, and I was just going to basically piggyback on what he said. That's where you start identifying the vision of where you want to go forward as a community. Now, the comprehensive plan in and of itself is really, it's making recommendations for policy changes and those kind of things. So what you, in a perfect world, what you want to do is you have your comprehensive plan as your base, and then your regulations are built on top of that. That's basically what we did back in 2011, 1213-ish, when we adopted the first comprehensive plan and then completely redid our zoning and subdivision regulations based on a lot of the recommendations we found in that plan. So that's ultimately what we're shooting for here. Now, this is not a quick process by any means, but I will say that when it comes to just new developments and things that we're looking at in the unincorporated area, I mean, these discussions that are currently ongoing, I mean, we're making the development community aware of these things. They're watching the meetings, they're aware of what's going on. When people are coming in, looking at development in areas, we had a meeting about a week ago, I guess, with someone looking to do a plan development in a more rural area, and told them flat out that the pendulum's swinging the other way, guys. This might not be as painless as a process as maybe at one time it was, it had been. So they're being made aware.
And those of you on the commission right here, you do have two individuals that are on that comprehensive plan. I know Commissioner P. and myself are on that steering committee for the comprehensive plan, so it's underway. It's beginning, and we'll start public hearings here before long, so it's in the mood. Further discussion? If not, we have a vote. We've already had, prepare for the vote, we've already had the motions made to approve on item number two, Buchanan Estates, section B. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, it is approved. Moving to item three, Sycamore Grove, section two, 23, 2011, 47 lots on 11.26 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Chaplin Drive, Sycamore Grove LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This preliminary plan was approved by the commission back in March of 2020. The final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary approval. Our comments have been addressed, this plat is in good order. There were road improvements that were approved as part of this development that went in with section one along Old Nashville Highway. I know there were a lot of drainage concerns with this particular subdivision as well. As far as I know, however, in any conversations I've had with our engineering staff, this plan appears to be in good shape when it comes to addressing those concerns, and I'll let Mike chime in on anything you want to chime in about.
Now, this is one that we took a lot of time and effort and worked with the design engineering team to help not just take care of this subdivision, but also see if we can make improvements to the surrounding area. And from what we've gathered so far, knock on wood, or for my co, is that it has helped the area. So we're tentatively hopeful that this will set a precedence and we can do this in other areas as well. So this area was prone to flood events during large rain events because it drained to large sinkholes. And working with the design engineers, we overdesigned retention-detention ponds to help collect storm water and hold it and not impact the existing residents around there. So we're very, like I said, very hopeful that this continues, and I'll show you another image. So they put in these large stormwater retention-detention ponds. There's one up here, and then there's another one down here. Like I said, we asked the design engineering firms to oversize these to help the neighboring community. They were, they did that, and it seems to be working, so we're very happy with what's come out of this. See, some areas that were prone to flooding here, here, there's actually a large sinkhole/ wetlands up here that causes issues, so. On my stormwater drainage soapbox, so I'll get off and let you all carry on.
I'm glad to hear you on that soapbox. Lot number 54 right there, what?
54 is the step system lot.
Okay, that's the step system.
That was plotted with the first section.
Questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion approved. Commissioner Everwater. Have a second. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, item three has been approved. Moving now into item four, Creekspend, section two, phase five, 23, 2012, 18 lots on 9.49 acres, Zoned RM, located along Blackstone Street, Silver Hill Partners LLC are the applicants. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in March of 2018. Similar to Buchanan Estates, this subdivision, just in general, has been under development for some time. This is a conventionally zoned piece of property, not a planned development. This final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary approval. Our comments have been addressed. Really, one of the only outstanding comments we had was at that 90-degree elbow in the road there. We asked them to change the road name, which they have done. They need to provide verification from 911 Emergency Communications that, I can't read that, was it something Woodway? What's that saying?
Blackstone Street.
Right. And they added the one on that one you're pointing at. I can't read it. But regardless, as long as that is an accepted road name through Emergency Communications, we'll be fine. They just need to provide verification of that. If not, they can put another name on there that is, and I mean, we'll be fine. We'll verify that prior to any plat recording. But again, our comments have been addressed, so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Have the second. Further comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Is approved. Moving now to item five, Richland Downs, section one, phase one, 23, 2014, 32 lots on 34.01 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Richland Richardson Road, Richland Downs LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the commission back in March of 2018. Again, this final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary approval. The, part of the improvements that were proposed as part of this development when it went through the rezoning process for a plan development was a realigning, and Mike is pointing out there, of Richland Richardson Road, kind of take that curve out of the road there, and also to add turn lane improvements into the development. So that has been part of the work with section one, that is what they're currently wanting to have final plat approval on today. The CUD step area will be accessed via a temporary 50-foot access easement. It's essentially going to follow the location of the road. That easement will just disappear as the road continues to be extended throughout the development. As with most of the plats and plans that we saw on this cycle, they have been changed and amended to address the comments that we have, so we do feel that this plat is in good order, and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. P.?
Yes. Doug, do you know, what's the condition? I know in this plan, they are going to widen and put in turn lanes, but what's the condition of the road between the subdivision and the Old Woodbury Pike?
I mean, it's, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, it is a county road. It does meet our standards, but there are some, and I'll get to the big map. Hold on just a second while I get there. So, let me turn off the aerials. So Richland Downs is in this area right here, and you're asking about the condition from here down? Yeah. So it is, it meets our standards, but it is a windy, curvy road. I'll show you what I'm talking about. So it does meet the county standards of width. So we looked at their traffic study and looked at the impacts at various intersections and the road width itself, the level of service. So what came back is that it did meet our standards, and I could try to get a measurement if my map doesn't fail. So it's 20 feet, two 10-foot lanes, and that's our minimum county road standard.
Well, the reason I ask, I know several people have asked me about this particular development on this road and are concerned about the amount of traffic, like all the other county roads in the county. But again, we're hoping to, in the new comprehensive plan, have a little more restrictions on roads like this to help those that are concerned about large amounts of traffic on these small county roads.
Right. So that's something that we probably need to look at when these come in for rezonings. Is that something that we want to see on a county road, you know, out in the district? So this was rezoned as a planned development, but it's in the residential low-density zoning area, so that's something we need to consider with the comprehensive plan as well.
Not to, Mr. Chairman, not to be too off the wall, but there are no shoulders on this road, are there?
No, sir.
I hadn't been out in a while, but what's happening, and I think this is what Commissioner P. is saying, and several of us are, these county roads are soon becoming not-county roads any longer.
And again, that's something we need to look at. So when a development comes in and they ask for a higher-density development in a RL zone, we might need to say, hey, let's look at this a little bit more in depth.
Yeah, and I'll kind of dovetail on to that to say that you'll recall, within the not-so-distant past, now, this actually applies more to the development that we'll discuss here in just a couple of minutes, Thompson Downs, section two. Those are conventional 15,000-square-foot lots. However, they were approved in the RL district at a time when we had that density bonus in there. Now, we've since removed that, and so obviously, this is approved, it can continue to move forward. But the Thompson Downs, again, I'm kind of jumping ahead of myself here, but we've already started taking some steps in that direction where, you know, we're not going to allow increased density just by right in the RL district, and I agree with Mike 100% that as we start looking at more and more planned developments, especially in the more rural areas, you know, that is definitely something we need to have a keener eye on moving forward.
Further discussion?
Or do we have a motion from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve with staff comments.
Motion, Commissioner Whitworth, have a second. Second, Commissioner Everwater, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, does pass. Moving to item six, Simmons Acres, 23, 2015, nine lots on 30 acres, Zoned RM, located along Last Cassus Pike, Simmons Builders Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is proposing to split this property, as you stated, into nine different lots. Several lots are going to share a common drive onto Last Cassus Pike, lots three and six, and I think also some of the lots on the eastern side of the property, lots seven through nine. There are two of those lots, particularly seven and nine, that are landlocked and are going to be served with a 50-foot access easement, which is identified on the plat. Both those lots are greater than five acres in size, so they're not asking for any waiver to that provision. As you can see, these lots, just in general, are all pretty much acreage tracts. I think most of them, if not all of them, are over two acres. However, that being said, those lots, especially further in the back, are going to be outside of the new 500-foot requirement we have for fire hydrants for developments that have six or greater lots. So you'll notice on the plat, and Mike kind of has it right there, where you see there's a few of these lots that are going to have to have residential sprinkler systems, seven, eight, and nine, based on what they're showing on the plat. The rest of them are technically going to be within 1,000 feet, or I'm sorry, 500 feet of the hydrant, just because most of these are flag lots, even though they're not going to have individual driveways back onto the highway. The plan is to use the existing driveways if they have to make any kind of modifications. Of course, they will have to get TDEC, not TDEC, TDOT approval, excuse me, because Last Cassus Pike is a state road. But that's kind of the big issue with this plat, and they're aware of that. They've added the fire sprinkler certification on there for those particular lots. So with that, again, I'll just double-check real quick, but most of our comments, I'm pretty sure, have been addressed on this, and with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is very odd-shaped lots, to say the least. You're going to have to hold my hand, please, and go over exactly what goes where and, I mean, and what lots share driveways.
Yeah, you see toward the top there, you've got the cross-access and utility easement on, yeah, for those, kind of those shaded areas. So all of those lots, now, at some point, their driveways are going to kind of break out so that they go to each individual lot. So you're looking at two, three, four, and probably, yeah, there you go, five, and then one more down there, six. Those are all going to access one driveway, and that's going to be that existing drive. You kind of see it right up there where Mike's pointing. So that area is going to be basically a cross-access easement for all of these lots. Now, if they wanted to build their own driveways, they could, but I think TDOT would prefer they just share the one drive, and I know from our standpoint, we probably would prefer that as well, so there's not multiple points so close together accessing Last Cassus Pike. So again, they're going to have to work that out with TDOT as far as any changes, but the frontage of those lots right there and that hatched area, that's all going to be cross-access easement, so that those lots will all have at some point a common drive, but then they'll break out into the individual lots. Same goes for on the eastern side, where you've got 10, nine, and then seven and eight. Those will all access one common drive back to the highway. So again, that's, it is unusual. You don't see this terribly often, but what they're doing meets our regulations, so. Did that help answer your question, Commissioner P.?
Think you might get lost coming home.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether this has anything to do with approval or disapproval, but that sounds like an awful good way to make unhappy neighbors with each other with sharing the drive. Who's responsible for the drive?
Well, they'll have to have some sort of an agreement amongst themselves. I mean, we're not going to be involved in that.
Right. If somebody doesn't want to pull their weight, we could have some unhappy people out there.
Well, you're right. That could very well happen.
So what we're talking about is approving something that we don't even know where the road's going to get on the highway for these lots at this time.
Well, the road should be on the highway where the existing driveways are. That's the plan, is to use those existing driveway connections to access those lots. Now, I said if they have to make any improvements, that'll have to be done through TDOT with any permitting that's required there, but the, talking with the applicant surveyor, and he's had conversations with the applicant, the plan is to use those existing driveway connections, not to make any new ones.
That existing driveway, if I'm looking at the plat right, you're talking about between P. and L.3 and L.4? Last Cassus Pike?
Okay.
Is that right?
There's one there, and there's one, yeah, Mike's highlighting them, correct, yes. Did that help answer your question, Commissioner P.?
Think you might get lost coming home.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether this has anything to do with approval or disapproval, but that sounds like an awful good way to make unhappy neighbors with each other with sharing the drive. Who's responsible for the drive?
Well, they'll have to have some sort of an agreement amongst themselves. I mean, we're not going to be involved in that.
Right. If somebody doesn't want to pull their weight, we could have some unhappy people out there.
Well, you're right. That could very well happen.
So what we're talking about is approving something that we don't even know where the road's going to get on the highway for these lots.
Well, the road should be on the highway where the existing driveways are. That's the plan, is to use those existing driveway connections to access those lots. Now, I said if they have to make any improvements, that'll have to be done through TDOT with any permitting that's required there. But the, talking with the applicant surveyor, and he's had conversations with the applicant, the plan is to use those existing driveway connections, not to make any new ones.
That existing driveway, if I'm looking at the plat right, you're talking about between P. and L. 3 and L. 4? Last Cassis Pike?
Okay.
Is that right?
There's one there, and there's one, yeah, Mike's highlighting them correctly, yes. That's why they have the cross-access note on the plat, so everybody knows when they're buying into this that, yes, this is a shared driveway. I mean, if they all wanted to build their own driveways and they all got TDOT approval, I mean, they would have the ability to do that because they all have road frontage back onto the road. But this would help with the number of connections.
This looks like the plat's incomplete without showing a roadway through there. If I'm buying a lot in here, I'd want to know exactly where my access to my lot is.
Right. Well, and they may not know that quite yet. Typically, on a final plat, you're not, I mean, this is the recording document. You're not necessarily trying to show exact locations of road. That's why they did the cross-access easement the way that they did. So it's kind of, you know, for lack of a better word, wide open through there. But at some point, they are going to have to all be on each individual lot as they access the home sites.
Doug, this may be a silly question, but why have all those driveways when you could put in a road?
Well, putting in a county road's a lot more expensive than just putting in private drives. And like I said, what they're asking for, I mean, they have 50-foot of road frontage. Flag lots are allowed in our regulations, so what they're asking for, I understand where you're going with it, but probably just from a cost standpoint would be my guess.
From a cost standpoint, couldn't they have an HOA and just have a road and make it be a private road instead of all those driveways?
Well, if they are going to do a private road, like you're talking about, the number of lots that they'd be looking at would have to be a planned development. So technically, right here, they're just sharing access, you know, amongst themselves. I mean, in essence, it's going to be a private road, but each lot does have road frontage. So none of them are landlocked except for those couple in the back. And again, we do allow up to three off of a private easement with no road frontage.
Mr. Chair, I think that's what bothers me. You conserve green space and all the rolling hills of middle privacy that we enjoy so much. Having many lots on a small or on, putting as many lots on one or a few acreage is a good idea. But what bothers me is the number of driveways, you know. And I know Doug says it's likely that they'll have one driveway or that's the plan, but they're not restricted. You know, something can always go wrong. They're not restricted to that. What is the likelihood that they'll have more than two accesses to these nine lots?
Well, again, I'm just going by what the applicant's discussions with the developer have been on this property. And I don't know if anybody's here representing, it doesn't appear so, but I can't ask any specifically. But, I mean, is there a chance that someone could want their own driveway and could get approval for that? Yeah, I mean, I think there is. I think, you know, just from a standpoint of the number of access points to Last Cassis Pike, I think we're more comfortable with the arrangement they have, albeit it's unusual. It's not unprecedented. We have seen other similar developments like this. But, and of course, they'd have to work through TDOT. You know, if TDOT says, well, we don't want to see this many access points, then, you know, they're going to be having to do whatever TDOT instructs them to do. But there is a chance. I mean, I can't say it's just not ever going to happen. I can't say that.
Doug, I don't remember this. Did we see a preliminary plan on this?
No, we wouldn't see a preliminary plan on this because there's not any, these are larger acreages, so there's really no stormwater to worry about. They're not building any new roads. There's no right-of-way being dedicated or anything like that. This wouldn't qualify for a preliminary plan. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go again. I cannot see how this will not cause problems in the neighborhood before this is all over. And I don't know whether that's our problem or not, or whether it's somebody else's problem. But if I read this right, if I buy lot number four, I have the middle access of all those little lanes over there, those little 50-footers right there. I keep mine up, but the two people on either side of me don't take care of theirs. Then I'm not going to be happy with them degrading my property but not keeping that mow. Is it my responsibility to mow all five of them or four of them?
No, I don't think so, but again...
But if I keep mine up and you don't keep yours, Doug, me and you ain't going to get along.
Yeah, we don't want that.
No, we don't want that.
But, but no, I think there's going to have to be an agreement in place for them. Now, again, if everyone wanted to do their own driveway on here, you know, legally, as long as they have TDOT approval, I think they could do that.
Driveway or not, Doug, they've got to, somebody's got to keep that land up. And do I get to fence mine off and say, you got to stay off of my 50 feet?
No, not in that cross-access easement. If it's within, that's why we had them put that on there. If they're within that cross-access easement, then they're not supposed to block off access so that everybody has use of that common drive.
Who's responsible for the upkeep then?
Well, that would be up to whatever arrangement they come up with. I mean, I understand where you're going with it, but it wouldn't be anything the county would be involved in. You know, that would have to be a private property matter at that point.
Can't see how that would not cause problems 25 years from now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I know this is kind of an unusual request, but...
We're used to them.
I know you are. I'd kind of like to hear from the developer. I'd like for him or her to come up and answer some questions.
Is the developer?
If they're here, I'd move to suspend the rules to allow the...
I don't... Developer here?
I don't think so.
Hadn't seen anybody here. That's what I was...
Move to defer.
Have a motion to defer. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye. It has been deferred. Item 7, Thompson Downs, Section 2, 23, 2016, 31 lots on 32.96 acres, zoned RL, located on land Adore Drive, W.R. Thompson Homes LLC, applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Preliminary plan for this development was approved back at the Planning Commission's July 27, 2020 meeting. Again, this plat is consistent with that preliminary approval. This kind of goes back to the discussion we had a little bit ago as we were looking at Richland Downs. You know, these are 15,000-square-foot lots, but were approved when that density bonus in the RL was in place, so we have to honor that approval. But by today's standards, obviously, this wouldn't be coming through like this. But regarding any comments that we have, again, the plat is in good order. They've addressed the comments we have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
Just a quick follow-up. When we come back for a reapproval or something like that, is it always the same developer or could a new developer have bought that and asked for approval?
It typically is the same developer. That doesn't mean that, you know, ownership may have changed. I mean, that is always a possibility. That could be why there's a delay sometimes. But typically, what we see is it's the same developer. It's just putting the infrastructure in and things have taken a little longer than anticipated. You know, the idea, and we stress this to our engineering companies, but of course, they're doing what their clients are telling them to do. But the whole point of the final plat and why we have the year timeframe on there, the whole idea is that they don't submit this until they're getting very close to getting ready to sell lots. So we don't want these sitting on the books, you know, for too long, which is why we have them expire after a year. But a lot of the times, developers just want to get through the process, and so they don't forget to do anything, don't worry about it, whatever. And then time gets away from them. You know, maybe state approvals are a little longer in coming than they thought. Whatever the issue is, they run out of time. So that's typically why we see these, but usually, it's the same developer. That was a long way to answer your question. Sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. It was a kind of unusual question anyway. The staff has looked at this and are A-OK with it?
Yes, we're comfortable with it.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion approved. Second. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose. It is approved. Moving now down to Section B, submitted for final site plan approval. Item 1 has been withdrawn. We move into number 2, Bill Rice Christian Academy, 233010, construction of 5,224-square-foot school building, zoned AR, located along Franklin Road. Bill Rice Ranch Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to add a new school building to the property. It will be connected to the existing school building via an enclosed hallway. When you look at the map and on here, and when you look at even the little map we have on your staff comments, it does look like that the structure is going to cross a property line. That was kind of one of the first things we picked up on. And actually, after talking with the applicant's design engineer and discussing it through it, this came up during the last time we looked at the school building that they had built a few years ago. We have had some conversations about that line with the property assessor's office. That line isn't technically a property line. It's a special interest line. When you look at the overall property, of course, the overall acreage of the property is, you know, hundreds of acres. This area here is taxed a little bit differently than the remaining area, which is why they have this line on there. So it's not technically a property line, so setbacks aren't an issue in that regard. Most of our comments, if not all of them, have been addressed. Obviously, this is a school building. They're going to have to meet building code and fire code requirements. Both our codes director, Tanya Bell, and our fire marshal, Josh Sanders, are present if you have specific questions of them. But from a planning and engineering standpoint, this site plan is in good order, and we'd recommend approval.
Questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Bill Rice Ranch has been there as long as I can remember and have always been a good neighbor and served an exceptional need that's always existed in our community. And if staff is OK with it, I move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Phillips, have a second. Commissioner P., further comments? All those in favor, say aye. It is approved. Moving now to item 3, Riverside Wedding Retreat, 233012, establishment of a 3,617-square-foot retreat event venue and related parking zone, PUD, located along West Jefferson Pike. Joseph and Chrysanda Maka are the applicants. Mr. Damasi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property was rezoned by the Board of Commissioners back in November of last year. The applicant is proposing to utilize this property as an event venue, wedding venue facility. They're proposing to build approximately 3,600-square-foot building for weddings and related events, and also adding a grass parking area. Access will be off of Rowan Oak Drive. They are providing an eight-foot privacy fence to the northern property line along with a number, significant number of plantings for buffering, consistent with their approved pattern book. When it comes to planning and engineering comments, I mean, really, we have nothing outstanding. Our comments have been addressed. Noise really was the biggest issue that was discussed during the Planning Commission's rezoning hearing along with the Board of Commissioners hearing they had on it as well. The applicant has commissioned a sound study, which has been completed and was on the share, well, the OneDrive, it's not SharePoint anymore, the OneDrive for your review consideration. The applicant is present and also has the person who handled the sound study with them for any specific questions. I'm not a sound engineer, nor am I the son of a sound engineer, so I'm not going to pretend to understand exactly what they were talking about in that report. But with that, like I said, our comments, from a planning and engineering standpoint, have been addressed. This is consistent with the approved pattern book. So with that, again, the applicant is present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, would you like to hear from the sound engineer or the applicant? Mr. Kush?
Mr. Chair, and Doug, refresh my memory. How we vote on this this morning, this still goes back to full commission for a vote or no?
No, this stops here. Site plan stops here.
It ends here, okay. All right. Yes, I would like to bring up the sound engineer, Mr. Lawson, for discussion because I do have a few questions. It seems like I might have been the tipping point on this particular matter in terms of my questions and needs for answers on the acoustic part of this process as I spoke multiple times in this setting as well as the County Commission meeting. I was not impressed with the first sound report. Mr. Lawson's is much more thorough and credible. I do have a few questions for him. But if you'd like, Mr. Lawson, go ahead and introduce yourself to Gail. She needs to get your contact info.
Right here.
Yeah, right here.
Right here.
And then just tell us about your report, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Certainly. Good morning. My name's Bill Lawson, Urban Crossroads. We prepared the acoustical report for the site. And just a brief overview, the basic process for a noise study is to identify the noise source, identify the noise receivers, and estimate the predicted noise levels based on reference source data, which is similar wedding activities or similar events. When we do these studies, we typically try and be conservative in our approach. So we always try and overstate the potential impacts and conservative in some of our noise abatement measures. A couple of things to point out here. The county maintains a performance standard of 60 decibels during the daytime and 55 at night. We're predicting peak noise levels from the wedding events in the 43 to 50 range. So we're estimating noise levels well below the county threshold for performance. And the other thing I will point out, there's five noise abatement measures identified in this report. One of the things I will share with everyone here is that usually, when I'm called in, it's after the fact, not before the fact. So it's always good to be ahead of these issues as opposed to behind these issues when it's a problem. So having said that, the best thing you can do from a noise standpoint is to plan for it and account for it, and that's usually through site design and through operational measures. The site layout is actually situated such that there's no exposed openings to the adjacent residential areas. And so, and there's also a privacy fence that's provided as well. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Questions? Use your mic, please.
When you said 60 decibels, I guess day, 55 decibels at night, at what footage off of the property is that your target?
Typically, we look at what we would consider to be the areas of frequent human use, which is essentially the backyard outdoor living area. Most municipal codes are written such that they're at the property line, but the fence is at the property line, and the fence actually creates a shadow zone. So without getting too technical, it's essentially the nearest adjacent residential use. Is that it to your question?
It does. I happen to live on a pretty busy street, and they just put a berm up of some plants. Couldn't believe the difference of the impact of noise just with the plants. Helped tremendously with traffic.
Mr. Lawson, the equations, you have, you've used some software, first of all, that is well-known across the country, across the world, to come up with some of your reductions. There's a couple of things that I don't quite understand in terms of your attenuation reductions, and in particular, one of where you came up with... and in particular, one of where you came up with the additional 25 decibel reduction for your kitchen, restroom, and north facade. You know, statistics and numbers, you know, it's kind of like a bikini. You know, what they reveal is suggestive, but what they don't reveal is really vital. So that's what I want you to delve into just a little bit about. You start with the point source in your report of about 95 dB for the DJ, and then you come through the wall and you have a reduction for construction, and then you have a distance of your different points of the property owners. And I, on the plans, it looks like the two garage doors, I think that a lot of people had some angst over, are facing the west. I think your report kind of had two little purple X's that, to me, looked like they were going to be on the south side of the building.
Correct.
But I think in the plans, unless they've actually been turned recently, they actually face the west. So I guess, I'm trying to understand is, between the kitchen, the restrooms, and that north facade that you call it, I'm not sure what that is, where you came up with that additional 25 dB reduction? So help me if you can walk through that. And then from that 95 to really at the endpoint, at the neighbors, and again, those distances vary. If you look at his report, it's got the different distances. Where you ended up with that 50-ish dB level?
That's a very great thorough question, so thank you for that. I'll just kind of walk through some of the fundamentals based on your question. So we actually used a noise source of 100 decibels, and that is actually reflective of really live music. You know, if you go to the Ryman or any of those other venues, it's going to be close to 100 decibels. That's the level we use. My understanding is that this venue is going to really primarily be DJ. Noise source levels, which are generally much, much lower and don't have the frequency range. So having said that, to answer your question specifically, most building structures will provide a transmission loss of around 20 decibels. And that's for pretty poor performing building assemblies, older structures. Newer structures with foam insulation and other kind of techniques really reduce that quite a bit. And frankly, mostly for energy efficiency and typical building code requirements, you're going to perform much higher than 20 decibels. So three of our facades, we assumed a 20 decibel transmission loss. The northern facade, which is the facade that actually has a kitchen and some, I believe, storage, as well as some restrooms, we've accounted for a little bit more because those restrooms and that storage and kitchen area really separate the wedding venue event area from those adjacent residential areas. We do have two noise sources, to your point, that reflect kind of openings or to the south, and so those are included in our model as well. So once you get from 100 decibels, you subtract the 20 or 25, you're close to 75, and then by the time you add the distance and some of the topography considerations, you get to those levels that are generally less than 50 decibels at the adjacent facades. Did I answer all your questions?
Been I was in the heating and air business for years, decibels were pretty important to us with adjoining property owners with equipment running. I just went back to a chart there, and if I'm hearing this right, you said 60 to 55 decibels, 55 decibels at night. Asked a minute ago, as far as that noise, where you measuring that at, if it's at the property line? I'm understanding household refrigerators about 55 decibels. So if I'm standing at the property line at night, equivalency of what's coming out of that wedding venue would be about like a refrigerator at the property line. Is that what we're saying?
Depends on how good your refrigerator is, but generally speaking, I believe that's a fair statement. Just by point of reference, I was actually out at the site this morning. Ambient noise levels there today are in the low 50s. When I was sitting back there in the audience, my sound meter on my phone was 57. As I speak to you now, it's probably close to 60, 65.
I was going to say, I got neighbors that trucks run a lot louder than that. Thank you. Source, excuse me, I'm sorry, I thought I had it on. What if the sound source is outside of that building, though? Who's going to monitor that?
That's a great question. We did not assume any exterior sound sources. My understanding is that most of these events are going to be held during the summertime, and most of those will be indoors for comfort reasons. But we did not assume any exterior active noise activity. We do have several noise abatement measures identified in here.
While he's looking at that, I will just add, the plan development that was approved, the receptions, I guess if you will, were all going to be inside. They were going to have an outdoor area with a face too, as you can see on the plan. That would really just be for the ceremony itself, not loud music or anything like that, just the ceremony, and then they'd go inside the building for the big party, I guess, so to speak.
Just a question for Tanya, if I may. Tanya, if you've got the Mr. Lawson's report pulled up?
Yes, I do.
Okay. On page six, it has noise abatement measures, is the very last two lines, and if you scroll to page seven, bullet number three is to limit the interior noise levels to 95 dB, and then bullet four is restrict the use of exterior doors. And I'm assuming we're talking about those garage doors on the western and eastern facade door, or I guess any door, during the DJ sound systems. So part of the plan is to keep the garage doors and the doors shut and keep the sound inside, and limit the maximum dB to 95. How can your group enforce that? What happens if you get a complaint, I guess is the real question?
As with the noise ordinance, you know, it's been in effect since 2007, and almost 100% of the time, we get the noise complaint after the fact. We get the noise complaint after the violation or after the noise event has already happened. So to answer that question, it's unless I'm onsite, unless one of us are onsite with a noise meter, there's virtually no way for us to confirm that a violation happened on Saturday night on Monday. Is there, I heard you say that you've got it on your phone and you can, is there a system set up in the venue itself, or can there be a system set up in the venue itself that can record noise levels, or that we can access noise levels, or?
Absolutely, there are systems available, allow you to control that. I've seen, you know, again, one of the points I really want to stress here is that most of the time I'm called in after the fact, after there's been a problem, after there's been a violation. This is one of the rare instances when I've been brought in as part of the planning process to make sure the site design is laid out and to make sure that there's noise abatement measures identified to control and to limit exterior events and things like that, to make sure that there's no exterior doors that have direct exposure to the adjacent residential areas. But there's any number of different ways to control noise. In this case, you always want to control noise at the source. That's the best way to manage it. So if you can frankly turn it down or enclose it such that that noise doesn't radiate beyond the structure, that's your best bet. I'm not sure, did I answer your question?
Well, the device that you're referring to, that you can refer to right now, is that something that is onsite that can?
I was just using my-
The applicant can install, and it can remain there so that we can track noise levels, or?
Um, there, yes, so there's, my device was my iPhone. I just had an app on my iPhone, but there are multiple devices that you can, I don't use that for-
Oh, so you're not reading at live time? So you don't have something onsite that you're reading on your phone?
I actually went there this morning and measured it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Oh, no problem.
And I thought you were able to look at your phone and see what it was there in real time. Okay, I understand.
Let me just ask a question if I, Mike, I'm sorry. Let me just ask a question. How about the road? Is the road creating more noise than what's proposed there?
Absolutely. I'm also a traffic engineer, and that's how I got into noise, is because most of the noise that we experience in an urban environment is related to traffic or transportation, particularly if you have a heavy truck that goes by, anything that's not on a suspension, loud exhaust, engine braking, any number of different noise sources. I would venture a guess, anytime a truck passes by there, you're probably in the low 70s decibel range. So those far exceed the performance standards outlined in the zoning ordinance, but those are specific for what we would consider nuisance type noise. So there's transportation criteria, which is completely separate, and then there's the nuisance noise criteria that the county can control.
For me, the bottom line is that the noise that would be created on occasion there would be no greater than what the noise on the road is already creating.
Correct.
Hey Jeff, noise is kind of one of my things, as you guys can probably tell. I slept with an audiologist for 30 years, so noise is kind of my thing. And when Rogers Group came before us 10 years ago with their quarry expansion, and we got into all the blasting and all that, I kind of delved deep into the noise thing. A garbage truck, 90 decibels. Now, we're talking about Jefferson Pike, and we know that on the end of Jefferson Pike, there happens to be a Middle Point landfill. A garbage truck is 100 decibels. Okay, so that gives you some kind of frame of reference. Tell us a little bit about, you talked about standard wall construction to get your reduction for your decibel reduction, not only on the northern facade, but also the multiple facades that the sound goes through. What else has Stephanie agreed to in terms of insulation, soundproofing, things like that, that will help those numbers even greater?
Probably best to let her speak to that. What we assumed was kind of the minimum. My understanding is that what she's going to provide exceeds that minimum substantially. With any building assembly, your building assembly is only as good as its weakest component, and your weakest component is almost always your windows. So, you know, in the case of the specific site plan, there are no exposed windows between the wedding venue and the adjacent residential, is my understanding, at least on that northern facade. So did you want any more clarification on the materials, or?
I believe it's safe to say that she is, what I liked about your report, and as a professional engineer who has to stamp with your seal and sign this, which means your butt is on the line, what I liked about your report is, as an engineer, we are conservative by nature. So you have not pushed the envelope in your equations to favor what Stephanie needs to get this passed. You have looked at the averages, high and low, and you didn't cook the books, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely. You know, these reports are only as good as our best guesses.
Right.
And in order to present a meaningful assessment, we always try and be as conservative as we can. And to the point I made earlier, we did not account for anything beyond minimum building assembly, so we didn't account for any foam insulation or other materials that were, I know have been added to the design to account for that concern.
Right.
There's also a screen wall that's in the analysis as well that provides some value. We did include topography in our model. We were pretty detailed in our model. I usually don't provide that level of detail for this type of analysis because it is such a small project, but it's a concern in terms of potential impact and, you know, and being, you know, being sensitive to the adjacent residences.
Right, okay. So you have made your equations based on standard construction techniques, but Doug, do you have on the record that Ms. Maka has agreed that she has included some extra soundproofing in, or do we need to get her?
Well, I think you need to get her up here, but I will say, she provided a letter from, let's see if I can zoom in here, Hidden River Spray Foam Solutions, that they're going to be doing a closed and open cell foam in her building. Now, that I thought, I don't know what happened, but I thought I had put that in the staff comments, but for some reason it's not there. I guess I thought I did and I didn't, I don't know.
Okay.
But we do have that, and she is going to do, and she's willing to speak to some of that.
And Mr. Lawson, as a professional engineer who put this sound report together, will that help, do nothing, or have a negative impact on the reduction of sound?
Oh, it will definitely help.
Okay.
One quick follow-up. A lot of times when we do a development, mostly residential, and there's issues, especially with water, we try to make that development improve the surrounding area. If we do some soundproofing, if we do a fence, would that not improve the neighborhood as far as sound from the road that's going back into that neighborhood? Would that make an improvement in the quality of, in essence, the quality of life of the neighborhood? Is the soundproofing, the fencing that we're putting up, making the road noise better or worse, or no different?
I think it's a fair question. I'm asked that frequently. Will the project improve the environment? And again, to be conservative, we typically try not to account for that, because there are sometimes, if you put a large building adjacent to a road, that building's going to provide a barrier to, you know, if there's anybody behind it. But it's, it's just, again, it's something we typically don't account for because we try and be conservative.
But in theory, it should help.
In theory, correct.
You want the applicant to come forward now? Can't see her, but would you like-
Spray foam guy's here, too.
Okay, spray foam, okay, okay.
Yes, sir. John Brewer, one of the owners of Hidden River Spray Foam. Typically, we don't insulate homes for sound. It's purely for insulation purpose and air exchange value. So this is a little bit of a unique situation, and we had to do some research into it, and what we came up with was, when closed cell spray foam is not only a sound barrier, which we found, but is a water barrier. So it's common to spray on, you know, the cinder block walls of a basement before they put in the French drain as a water barrier. Very, very common, we did it a lot. So in our research, we discovered that not only is it a great sound barrier, but open cell spray foam, which is the counterpart, it is a great sound absorption. So it'll reduce the decibels greatly on its own. So we're going to put up closed cell foam first, then spray three inches of open cell foam, giving you a grand total of five inches of foam, which is way more than we would ever do anyway. So you're going to end up with the sound going through the open cell, getting that reduction, hitting this barrier, closed cell, bouncing back through and getting a second level of reduction. So overall, your sound reduction is far greater than anything that I normally deal with. And just to paint the picture for you, I'm not sure how many of y'all ever lived in a home- home that the interior walls were not insulated, and you know, you could hear your parents speaking through the walls or hear just conversations through everything. If you just simply put standard insulation in between those interior walls, that kills that completely. So now think about, we're doing that, you know, to a degree that is unheard of, again, in preparation for maximum sound reduction.
Doug, are you going to improve that, include that in your comments, in your staff comments?
Yeah, I think if you say staff comments, I mean, this, I think we're all clear on the steps she's taking, but I think to have that in there is to be belts and suspenders.
Anything for Ms. Maccas? Anyone like the applicant? Nothing, okay.
All right, Mr. Chair. Based on the acoustic report from Bill Lawson, who is a professional engineer, and I do know that professional engineers in the state of Tennessee swear an oath to the safety of the public, the health and safety of the public, I am convinced that he is very legit and his equations would be conservative, as engineers are. So I am happy to make a motion to approve based on staff comments and the additions to the additional construction techniques that Ms. Maccas has approved or agreed to do, and would like to enter Mr. Lawson's report into the final report.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second and commend them for going the extra mile. I think this is a great use of a historical property and a beautiful site that could have gone to subdivisions or, you know, something that would not preserve the history of this spot. So I gladly second and commend them for the extra mile they have been, or they have done to be good neighbors, and good luck to them.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those oppose, it is approved. Staff reports and other business?
I don't have anything, but I believe Mike would like to address the commission.
Yes, so we, we follow the rules and regulations on the books. We enforce everything, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations that we have on the books. And we also take our cues from the planning commission and county commission. So if there's something that you want us to change, let us know. Let us, you know, talk to us after the meeting, before the meeting, whatever. Let us know what you'd like us to change, and we will look into that. So it's a two-way street. It's just, it's not just whatever we say goes, it's, you know, we take our cues from the planning commission. I just want to let y'all all know, I'll go above and beyond with drainage and traffic until the applicant squeaks and screams, but if, if we can get some help from y'all telling us what you'd like to see changed, let us know and we'll do it.
All right.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder that our next planning commission meeting will be April the 10th here in the courtroom at 6 o'clock PM. Other comments? If not, we are adjourned.